I will order the meeting to the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, September the 18th. You would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance after the pledge. Please regain standing and be led in prayer this evening by Josh Lemmons, pastor of the Greenwood United Methodist Church. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Precious God, as we gather here in this space, we pray that you be in our minutes and our meeting and our business in details and our agendas. But most of all, holy God, we pray that you would remind us that we are public servants, folks who are called to serve the people and that we would do so diligently and honor you in all that we do. Pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. Roll call. Present. Here.
Here. Hopper. Lexi.
Here.
Here. And we do have a quorum. All of you should have received copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting of September the 6th. We have a motion from Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Bates. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? And then the roll call in the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
I'm Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. And it's approved in a vote of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
The identity assembly monthly report is available on SharePoint.
Anything for Controller at this time?
Not at this time.
All of you should have received a copy of my report on the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, let me know. Any other committee or board reports? Very done. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you were online, please speak up.
Good evening, council members. Radio 1157, Central Park Boulevard, South Franklin, Indiana, 6143. I want to speak on behalf of Resolution 23 Act 18 in regards to the appeal of the REIT for property taxes by the Indiana Department. I've been reading through this. I understand that we have grown significantly, actually, as I write, 1.65% faster than the statewide average, meaning we've increased 14,000 residents since the 2010 census. My concern is we're already very highly taxed on our properties. And this, from looking back, this is going back over a three-year assessed value of our homes. Now, our home values have a downside. We'll admit that. But we, as homeowners, had absolutely nothing to do with that. Certain concerns, if we keep taxing, and I do know that we need additional public safety officials and other government employees to fill roles. But the concern becomes, as we keep increasing these taxes, we're going to keep pricing ourselves out. Not only that, the other big concern is, act alone, if you're watching the news and reports, they're waiting for the housing bubble to burst. What happens when our home values drop $20,000 next year, or $30,000, or whatever that number may be? This is going to be adjusted to account for that, regardless of what we set it at tonight. I think it's very unfair that if we set it at something that it's not like a curve or floating scale that adjusts with those property taxes because in your continued pricing, wow. It would seem that if we gained 14,000 residents, all 14,000 residents would be paying the same taxes as the rest of us are. That would help offset the status of that we currently have that has caused us to not be able to afford to still the jobs that the city is committed to by this city. I'm questioning if we really need this when I read back through what the levels are in the rainy day fund. What I know is being committed through tip money and different things, they think there's other ways that the city can find, can finance things like this rather than continuing to raise a property tax. But again, the homeowners who have been here for a long time have absolutely no control over what the market is driving and are fearful that it's actually going to drive back to a negative sometime in the short term. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else who's going to address the council at this time? Seeing none, then moving on to ordinances, resolutions. None under notice and intent to consider. First reading, Resolution 2317.
A resolution agreeing with the common council expressing interest in the purchase of certain real property and cussing your road sponsored by Hopper.
Have a motion. Motion for Mr. Hopper, second. Second to Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on it? Anybody want to talk about this? Thank you.
Good evening. Mark St. John, City Engineer. I apologize that I was not here two weeks ago. I think there was some discommunication between me and our capital programs manager who's going to present this. I understand there were some questions. Everyone on the council was curious about what this project would look like. This is Cutsinger Road between Honey Creek and Abrit, Abrit Road. I call this existing road Golds County Road Section. It has two 10-foot length with no shoulder. The last several years, there's been significant growth in the area, including our fire station, Cherry Tree Walk, and the Corbett State subdivisions. The new development has approved Cutsinger Road along the frontages to have two 12-foot lanes with two-foot shoulders. What we're proposing is to essentially fill those sections of roads that didn't have that before. So the new roadway will have two 12-foot lanes throughout the entirety of Cutsinger Road between Honey Creek and Abrit. We're also going to include a section of a 10-foot paved trail from the Corbett Estates west towards Honey Creek. I have been answering questions. You all may have. That's a high level of just right.
Are any questions for Mr. St. John?
I think, sorry.
I just had a question that was brought up by the constituents at last meeting where the easement, or not easement, but some of their land and their garden is being purchased and they're having to pay themselves for the utilities to be run. Is that the case?
So we are currently purchasing right-of-way on this project, particularly towards the east end of the project on the north side of Cutsinger. That's not a planned subdivision. So there's no existing right-of-way out there. The property lines actually go almost all the way to the center of the road. So for a large section of that, we're actually rebuying what's essentially existing right-of-way and then buying additional right-of-way to allow for the widening of roadside digits and that sort of thing. This project does not have any plans to run utilities. The only utility the city of Greenwood could run would be sanitary sewer, and it would not be included with this project.
So American Water would not be asking folks to run?
They might be on their own if Indiana American Water desires to run water being out that way. There would certainly be additional right-of-way to do that, but it's not included as part of the scene, right?
So this project has no bearing on that, the utility, water utility, or?
No.
Mr. Bates, you have?
No.
Okay.
There's a question I had.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. St. John. Any discussion on the council? Here and then roll call, Resolution 2317, first reading. Aye.
Etron. I'm Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Resolution 2317 passes first reading, nine to zero. Second reading, ordinance number 2319.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Greenwood to become a member of the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority for the Indiana Code 367.7, sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Mr. Lexi, second. Second to Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the council? Here and then the roll call, ordinance 2329, second reading.
Etron. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye. Resolution 2329 passes second reading, nine to zero. Or ordinance 2329. Resolution 2315.
A resolution agreeing with the common council adopting their preliminary strategic economic development plan for the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority for the Indiana Code 367.7, sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Bates. Any discussion? And then the roll call, Resolution 2315, second reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Etron.
Aye.
Resolution 2315 passes second reading, nine to zero. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 2332.
An ordinance for appropriation and tax rates for 2024 budget year.
You want to just do them all at hand?
We'll do them all, too. All right. Ordinance 2333.
An ordinance fixing salaries of paid officers and employees of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, and city utilities for the year 2024, sponsored by Gibson.
Ordinance 2334.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the clerk of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, for the year 2024, sponsored by Gibson.
Ordinance 2335.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the city judge of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, for the year 2024, sponsored by Gibson.
Ordinance 2336.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the common council of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, for the year 2024, sponsored by Gibson.
Ordinance 2337.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the mayor of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, for the year 2024, sponsored by Gibson.
And Resolution 2318.
A resolution agreeing with the common council of petition for appeals released from the property tax levy limitations, sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Wright, you want to do these during budget presentations, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that all right with the council? All right. Mislanious business. This is the opportunity to set aside for members of the public to talk to the council concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. And if you would like to do so, if you're online, please speak up. If you're here, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing none, moving on. Council, miscellaneous business. We have one conflict of interest.
Prashana Kuhn's legal department for her son Jackson Davis will work part-time for the legal department for any work he may do for the city.
A motion to approve this. Motion for Ms. Gibson, second to Mr. Hopper. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. It passes unanimously. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Our citizen asked me about when the road or the city, street, I should say, main street here is going to be completed, any date, tagline, timetable, but that's.
Anybody know when it's going to open, Main and Madison?
Recent conversations I've had.
End of the month? All right. That sounds good. All right. Anything else from the council? All right. Anything, Corporation Council?
Nothing.
Corporation Council. And Mr. Controller, it is your floor.
Good evening, everybody. Set up here. They need your assistance. Go ahead. So while we're getting set up there, I think it may be helpful to start by giving a brief history and synopsis about property taxes with the state of Indiana. So in the late 70s, early 80s, the state of Indiana locked in every community that received property taxes as what's known as a maximum levy. That maximum levy, whatever that dollar amount is, is what you were locked in at to fund your services. Every year, you would get a increase to that number based on the average growth around the state. That maximum levy growth culture was based on the increase in non-farm income, six-year average. So since I've been in the industry, I've seen growth from between 2% and 5%, basically. Most of the larger end numbers have been the last couple of years. The reason that's important is, if you think about the history of Greenwood, in the late 70s, early 80s, the city of Greenwood did not have a full-time firefighter, fire department. We did not have to pay for a full-time fire department. We had a much smaller population, a much smaller police department, far fewer roads to pave, far fewer roads to plow. The service levels that were needed were much smaller. Looking at Greenwood now, you'll see that we are quite a bit larger. We're doing a lot more, but we still are operating basically on the number that was set plus a little bit of growth that was given year after year. Last year, the DLGF informed us that based on the calculations for the excess levy appeal, they would not approve anything more than a 2% increase. So that was what we asked for. That worked out to approximately 320,000. This year, the calculation showed us that the city of Greenwood has grown over the last three years more than 9% faster than the statewide growth average. So the statewide growth average came out just above 4% of the last three years. For the city of Greenwood, our number was about 13% based on our assessed value. So we talked to the DLGF and they said that we could request up to that full amount, which for us this year would be about $1.4 million. Our process on this is basically, this is a one-time chance for you to catch up what you've missed out on because you've grown faster than the rest of the state. So if you look at other communities in the state, some are contracting, some are staying the same. We happen to have a lot of growth. In fact, as we get into this first slide here, we'll talk about that. From 2013, the assessed value, the assessed value for the city of Greenwood was just over $2 billion. Our certified net assessed value for 2024 is almost $4 billion. So in just over 10 years, we've grown almost double what we were in 2013. That is significant growth in AB. Part of that's bringing in through annexations. Part of that is growth in the assessed values as far as the commercial areas that have grown, as far as residential, we've added a lot. And also, there is the fact that the value of property has increased. And in fact, the growth we saw last year was almost exclusively due to the quick-growing cost of everything because we do have a market-based approach to assessments. So you can see here that our, last year, the AB grew 20%. Most of that was because of the crazy house prices coming out of COVID. Much more reasonably this year, our assessed value grew almost 5%. Our levies only were allowed to grow 4%. So we did end up with some capacity in our rates because if we kept everything the same, you would see a drop in tax rate, for sure. But what happens with that is all the things that are determined by Greenwood's piece of the property tax pie will also. So your income taxes, your local income tax, your economic development income tax, those are tied to your property taxes. So if Greenwood is 40% of the total property taxes for the county, we get 40% of the income tax money. If Greenwood is 35%, we only get 35% of the income tax money. If you think of the sources for income taxes for Johnson County, most of it's here in northern Johnson County. And if you look at the population center, Greenwood is it. We are the biggest piece of Johnson County's population. We are the biggest piece of the contributors to that income tax. We think it's fair to bring that money back into Greenwood and put it to work for our residents. What we are proposing in this year's budget would be to keep the tax rate exactly as it was for 2023. Because of the growth we've had in the assessed value, we can capture the requested increase for the levy appeal as well as a small general obligation bond that will fund a fire engine and some street work and still keep the tax rate flat. That keeps our piece of the pie the same as what we've kept it in the past. One of the reasons that myself and the mayor have always tried to do this is if you have tax rates that jump up and down based on whatever's happening, what you're going to have is every individual taxpayer is going to see from year to year, big swings in their tax bill. Which means if you are on mortgage and your taxes are escrowed, your mortgage payment is going to have big swings from year to year, every year that it changes. Where the things that we can control here, Greenwood's piece of the tax rate, we're keeping it flat, we're keeping it even. Things we can't control, how houses are assessed, that happens at the county level and it's based on the market. There's nothing we can do about that piece. What any other unit does. If the schools were to issue a bond, that might increase somebody's tax rate. We don't have control over that. You know, the library or the county were to increase their rate, there's nothing we can do about that. So one thing we can control is what burden we ask the taxpayers to bear. And so we ask them to keep it as level as we can, keep it year to year the same so that they can plan for it, they can know what's coming. And that's the best thing we can do for our taxpayers, I think, rather than swinging the tax rate up and down based on some, something that may or may not happen one year or the next. Part of the reason we're asking for this levy appeal is that this is the only mechanism that the state provides for you to get operating funds. We can do what we've done in the past. We could issue a rather large bond, pay for capital stuff. That's great. It helps. But what it doesn't do is help us with operating costs. It doesn't help us with staffing. It doesn't help us with the fact that healthcare goes up. It doesn't help us with getting the Plan Station 95 up to full staffing by the beginning of 2026. So those are the things that, as we're looking forward, this levy appeal becomes even more important. And if you think about it, because of the way the tax system is set up, we're going to get somewhere, next year, we know for sure, we're only going to get 4% because that was set in statute this year. So they give us two years locked in 4%. So that 4% growth, we can either have it go on whatever we've got currently or we can have it go on what we've got currently plus the extra $1.4 million to help fund all of those operational needs, to help fund adding police officers, to help fund adding firefighters, to help fund the increases that we're seeing to all of the supplies that go into the salty roads, that go into any of the services that we're providing. The costs have been inflated because of the current environment and the economy. And this is a way that we can help keep up our service levels and absorb those costs. The other factor that hits us every year is the tax caps, also called circuit breaker tax. Basically, this is the 1% on the residential homestead, 2% on agricultural real property, and 3% on personal. The estimated number here comes from the DLGF. It does show us going over 2.5 million in losses this year. So again, every year, even though we've had growth in AB, we are seeing more losses to the circuit breaker. So anything that we can bring in to help offset those helps. If we cut back on what we're receiving in our income taxes, that's going to hurt because we're not only losing whatever we're losing here, we're also losing $4 of the income taxes. So we really do have to keep in mind that there are things besides the property taxes that are dependent upon the property taxes. So here, I'm showing a summary of cash flows for the 2024 budget. Basically, these are all of the non-debt funds that will be flowing through the DLGF-approved budget. You can see on that top line, the general fund. The one thing I do want to point out on that one, at the end, at the very end, 34% cash reserve. Cash reserve is extremely important in that property taxes, which are our biggest income source, come in every six months. If you recall during COVID, the governor issued an order that delayed payment of property taxes, which also delayed our receipt of property taxes, which meant we went a couple of extra months to pay bills from cash on hand because our big income source was not available. Other places in the state, I've seen large delays. When I was in my prior role, I had a client community that was operating on loans for five years because there were issues between their county assessor and county auditor on getting certifications. Now, all of those taxpayers got five years worth of tax bills at once. But in the meantime, those communities were still expected to provide services. So these reserves are our hedge against any kind of delay in getting property taxes in and make sure that we can pay our bills between those receipts. You'll see, the only one that's got a 0% reserve is that Economic Development Income Tax Fund. The reason for that is we use it to reimburse the fire fund and the general fund for fire police salaries. So basically, that is an in-and-out fund. It's not one that we are paying other bills on. One item that I do want to address with the levy appeal, our intent is for that to go into the general fund. Number one, because that is where we pay both the police department expenses as well as the health insurance expenses. Those are the two big drivers for us this year as far as the increases that we want to capture for that. But also, it allows us to put more income taxes into the fire department fund. We want to do that because we have, until the 2026 opening of Station 95, we get 12 firefighters funded at, between the salaries and benefits, just over 100K per. So we want to make sure that we've got all of that ready to go. When that station opens, there's going to be the fact of building that station, there's going to be putting equipment in that station. But those can be done through bond issues. Tiffany can help out with some of that. But at the end of the day, this is the only source for operating. This is the only way we can get 12 guys by 2016 to staff that station is making sure that we have the operating funds available. I do want to address one concern that Mr. Biden raised regarding the economy and the housing bubble burst that could be coming. One thing to keep in mind with the property taxes is, even though we do have a maximum levy, you as a counselor are not required to take the maximum levy. You actually do have the option to not take it. If there were a big fall off in assessed values next year and you told me that we don't want the tax rate to go up, we can make that happen. We can back into that. If you tell me, don't let the tax rate go up, I can make that happen by cutting other things or looking at options and giving options to, hey, if we do less here, we do less there, we can bring the tax rate down. You're not required to take the maximum levy. What this does is it gives us the option to have that available to us. Our philosophy the last several years since I've been here has been to keep that tax rate level and focus on that and operating within the dollars that tax rate can generate for us. So that would be, moving forward, barring any change in guidance from the administration, my intent would be to keep that tax rate flat to benefit our taxpayers and to keep them with a level tax rate that they can count on from here to here from us. Some of the highlights of the year-over-year changes in this year's budget. The general fund overall, the expenditures would be going up 11.47%. Driven partly by salaries, the increased cost of benefits. We added some big service contracts under IT legal. The other piece of that is the way that the income taxes work. It has to get put into the general fund and then budgeted to be transferred out of the general fund to acquire to the local income tax bond. So that transfer increased because our local income tax dollars increased in the county. So that's part of that as well, under the fire.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Interrupt just a second. Before we move on, I'd like to ask if anyone on the council has any questions regarding Resolution 2318? Yes, Mr. St. John.
Okay, I, the first one is, so where does the 100, the $1.4 million materialize if it doesn't come from the taxpayer? Like, how did that, where did that come from?
It comes from the taxpayer, but the tax rate that Greenwood is asking that they stay is the same. So basically, because there has been increases to the value of property, there is, that, that tax rate that, that Greenwood would be charging would generate additional dollars. So that's where those additional dollars come from. They're generated by the increase in the property values. So that, I mean, that's what's driving most of the tax bills currently is the increase in property tax values.
Yeah, along that line, just a personal example, my taxes from 2022 to 2023 went up 22%, but the tax rate actually decreased slightly, but it did decrease. But my taxes went up because of the assessed value and the, the very word assessed value means someone assessed a value to my property and that's why I pay more taxes and that person is not a city official, it's a county elected official. So we have little of anything to say about our assessed value. If, if we do, we have to appeal that to the county assessor. It's not something the city does. But my property taxes went up 22%, but my tax rate actually decreased over that same period of time. So that's just my personal opinion. Sorry, anybody else have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. So when we talk about keeping it flat for 2024, and what is, are you, is that the same thing that you want to try to keep for 2025, 2026?
Yes, five whole ever years to keep that, that rate level, to keep it the same rate from year to year. So whatever you get from the county that says your own next year is going to be valued at X, you know what Greenwood's piece of that X is going to be. Now, I can't tell you what, whether the county, the school, the township, the library, anybody else that may get a piece of your tax bill may do, but from the city of Greenwood's perspective, you'll know every year that we're going to be at the same level as far as the, the rate goes. So you could calculate that as soon as you know what your house is going to, calculate what the piece of it is going to be.
I got one more, sorry. Is there a way that we can make sure that that money, if that happens, if it gets approved, that it goes to staffing and not something like, I mean, it's parks, but parks gets our food beverage tips. So I don't want money going to parks because I already got a pool for that. Whereas this really have to go to police and fire because there's nowhere other places to pull it from.
And, and for, for our maximum levy, we have basically a handful of options that it goes into. It is the general fund, fire fund, the parks operating fund and the CCD or CCI community capital improvement rate. What we have done and what we intend to keep doing is to fund general fund mostly through property tax, which then allows us to put more income taxes in the fire department, specifically because that money comes in every month. So since they have less of a cash reserve, general fund, I think it's important to make sure they have a regular income source. But also the, the parks department has several things that they have an income source on. So free and springs all goes into their operating fund. The sports park is all going to go in there, the community center, the fieldhouse. So they do have a revenue source that neither the fire fund or police really have. So we've actually been able the last several years to decrease their piece of the property tax buy because they're able to fund themselves with some of those revenues that they brought online. So when we, when we break out how we want to use the funding, generally what we're going to be looking at is how much does this go to the general fund? And then how much does that mean I get push-in income taxes to fire? That's been our, our, our plan also because the fire fund is on a smaller assessed value base. There's a large chunk of the 135 corridor that does not pay it to Greenwood Fire. So any dollars that go into that fund actually increase the rate more than dollars that go into the general fund. So the more property taxes we put on general and out on fire, the more we can keep that rate down. And then we can use income taxes to fund the fire. So that's been our, our strategy and it's worked out very well for us. So I don't see that we would need to change that. And in fact, Worshtown Sports Park coming online to generate core revenues, there's actually potential to even take more of the property tax funding away of the parks side because between the food beverage and their income, they're funding a bigger chunk of what they're doing for those instead. Which is helping out a lot as well.
But you didn't want us to have a question?
I have a question. Craig, what would be your best prediction of what the year-over-year tax rate would be?
So, so my, my intent is to keep it 0% increase. So right now we're at 0.6588, I believe, so just under 66 cents for the city of Greenwood's tax rate. I would want to keep it at that this year, next year and the year after that. Just because I, I don't, I don't want to see the rates increasing because that then creates uncertainty for people. I think it's easier to keep it level, work within that number that's generated and get people the certainty of knowing and being able to predict what their tax bills will look like year to year.
And we can accomplish that by passing this ordinance?
We can. We can still accomplish that, passing this and also the GeoBond that we're discussing.
Okay, and as I have understood it, that the growth has to be over 2% over the levy to qualify. But based on ours last year, it was 9%. Is that correct?
Correct. So when, when you look at the levy appeal process, they look at the three-year average and you have to have grown 2% more than whatever that three-year average was. So basically, if you look at, this year's 4%, last year's 5%, the year before that, I forget what it was, but when they averaged it out, it was 4. something for the three-year average growth. Greenwood was at 13.3% for the three-year average growth percentage. So basically, Greenwood 9% faster growing than the state average. Which is why if you look at this as we need a chance to catch up our operating funds to keep up with the service levels, we need to do providing.
Any others have a question?
I have a question for you. So obviously you mentioned the 1.4 million that this levy allows with the appeal. What does it mean for a taxpayer if this did not pass? Obviously with us having to be more efficient to find 1.4 million dollars, but what's it mean for the individual taxpayers?
From the taxpayer's perspective, Greenwood's rate doesn't change. The only thing that would change their tax bill is the assessment or somebody else does. But from, from the taxpayer's perspective of Greenwood, the rate will be the same. There's not a rate increase coming from Greenwood's taxes. So we're not asking them to pay a larger proportion per hundred dollars of assessed value. What we don't have control over is how much that assessed value has gone for each individual. Because some places may grow 6% or 8% or 10%, the overall for the city was just under 5%. But at the end of the day, can't control what that is for each individual. But what we can control is what we're asking them to pay, which is just that slightly under 66 cents.
And any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Again, I, I just kind of highlighted some of the, the larger changes in budgets. Fire fund, 11.68%, again, salaries and benefits are the biggest piece. But we did put in a larger repair maintenance budget this year. We're trying to get out ahead of a lot of the, the maintenance, trying to do a lot of preventative maintenance on the new agents we've got and keep them in service longer. One of the big decreases was the probation fund. I worked with Mr. Foster, who's the judge foster, and we looked at revenues coming in in the probation fund last year or two and they were down pretty significantly. Well, investigation, we determined that the volume of probationers being served has fallen off. I think a lot of that is based on what's being sent to our court at the county level. But we did have a handful of positions that weren't filled and we determined that they were not necessary to be filled. And so those have been removed from the budget and so that's why you're seeing that come down. Because the staffing that's there currently is sufficient and we didn't see a need to backfill those positions based on workload currently. So should that change next year if we get a big increase? Judge Foster, soon to be Judge Foster and I will be back here asking for additional appropriation. But we currently think the way things are going now, this will cover everything we need in probation here. Finally, the combo parks fund, food beverage fund went up 10.8%. Salaries, again, at 5% goal. We did employee benefits. We do charge for, for the health insurance for their full timers. And then there are the onboarding costs to get Worshtown Sports Park going. So we've got some mowers to be purchased up there, bases for the ball fields, all the supplies for the concession stand, all the things to get them up and running are in there this year. But again, we expect those things to start generating revenue once it's open and they can start bringing out those fields. The other piece of that is their utilities. Those ball fields are going to have lights. They have to be watered to keep the grass and then utilities across the board have gone up. So, so we do have some growth in that. So you'll, you'll see that when we talk about the parks budget. Wanted to hit on some of the, the capital project items that we're looking at in this year's budget. Number one, FireEngine. We are giving, we have one on order that was due to be delivered in 2025. Seagrave actually offered us a deal. They would give us the same pricing if we'd like to add another one and deliver it at the same time and build it at the same time. We determined we could fund it with the GeoBond and we would like to get another one. Again, that's part of that getting things ready for Station 95. So we, we are working that into that GeoBond to get a 2025 delivery. We already have the other one funded. This is the second. Expanding our security cameras, so it would be this building, airports, Justice Center. There were several things of servers and other hardware that needs to go in to make that happen, but that's all under the ARPA funds. In the food and beverage funds budget, there are some HVC units to be replaced on the community center. We've been doing those two at a time for the last couple of years. We're going to keep that up and basically replace all of them in the next, I think it's three more years of that. The Worshtown Sports Park equipment I discussed, fire suppression system for the IT server room. This was something that came out of our cybersecurity consultant's analysis. We have on the fourth floor servers for all of the city's computer systems. They suggested we put in a fire suppression system that was safe for those, the servers. Basically, it's a power-based system that wouldn't destroy them should there be a fire. It also included putting a steel door on that room so that any fire would be prevented from spreading. We talked about during the, the police department section on the first night, the Axon virtual reality training, also the Axon interview room hardware and software. We've got another Harley-Davidson motorcycle for the PD. We've got to train in with that. So the net on that is just over $23,000. Our annual road paving and crack sealing project, part of that from the MBH fund, about 1.33 million. The remainder would come from the ARPA or the bond or we had a couple of other sources of road funding things that we're, we want to look at. The Craig Park tennis courts reconstruction is built into the food beverage fund. I believe the intent there is to, to tear that out and put in brand new courts. They are, I think, quite well used and quite well aged. The airport apron expansion, we talked about this on the first night. This is a, a project that's funded through FAA grants. We do have a matching portion. This year, our matching portion was actually quite a bit more than a normal year because of the inflated cost of construction. What we can improve for grant wise did not keep up with the inflated costs. What we determined was it would be better to use some cash out of the airport funds and get it done this year rather than lose that grant, have to reapply and wait another couple of years to get the project complete. There's some parks maintenance equipment in there, mowers, trailers and trucks. And then there's some updates for University Park. They want to put in some new sidewalks, some new benches. That, those are both to come out of the food and beverage fund. So those are in the line items of that fund that we're raising. So now I'd like to go ahead and dig into our, our departmental, my two groups. Again, I'm going to walk through how we get to the budget. So going to Greenwood dot IN dot gov, reach to our landing page here. We need your help here for a second. So the departments, finance department's page, very top of the page, there is a link for the budget. Let's see, the 2024 for the budget. So the first one on my list is the mayor's department. So the mayor's office, basically the personal services has the 5% cost of living adjustment that we discussed. Some of the organizations that, that are members of did have some increases. What we discovered is a lot of these have a population-based system where they determine what your, your dues are. Because of our population growth, we have moved up a tier, which is nice from the side of we're growing, not as nice from the side of how many they were a member. But that's what's built into the mayor's, mayor's budget. And just for everybody who is trying to see how to read everything on here as you scroll down, we've got a year-over-year summary in draft form and then also in number form. So you can see 2023 was just over 571,000, going up to 588, the biggest increase captured in the personal services line. And if you want to see the line items, you can actually come down here and click on any one of these categories and then we'll show you what makes up that line. So as you're going through and, and looking through the budgets, that's how you find what makes up each of the line items. We'll take you back and we'll take a look at the council's budget. So the council budget has a 2.5% increase in wages for the council members. Additionally, this budget is also where you have several contracts funded. Just going to show you that under your other services and charges. So this is where your social agreement, the sharing of the contract with the mayor's office, the band, et cetera. We do have a line in there for continuing education if anybody wants to go to any of the AIM functions. We also have a line in, in that budget for your legal counsel should you need outside legal counsel, similar to what we did this year with the redistricting that came out of that line. We tend to keep that, that at 25K, but we haven't passed funded more if we needed it in other sources. Next one I have on the list is IT. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a, a rather large contract in here for the cybersecurity consultant. We discussed this a month or two ago when we did the additional appropriation to pay out the rest of this year for that consultant. Basically, this is to monitor our ongoing cybersecurity needs as well as help provide us with any kind of software we may need. It also has the 5% cost of living. I think you're going to see that just about every single point we go through here. Supplies has gone up a little bit based on inflation. So the cost of printers, monitors, things like that have gone up, cost of the iPads has gone up. One thing I do want to show you on this one, this is the first one that's kind of special this way is that if a department has line items in multiple funds, at the very bottom of that department's page, you will see something like this. So you can see that the IT department has general fund budget lines, but they also have budget lines in the But they also have budget lines in the tax levy fund, the CCI tax levy and the Q cap development fund. Most of those are related to software maintenance and licensing agreements. So we tend to pay those from those two funds. And pretty much most departments, you're gonna see that falling under IT, IT pays the bill for those licensing agreements. And that's where we try to capture that. And that also includes our Microsoft licensing for all of the city computers, because your email and all of that runs through that. To the Parks and Recreation Department. So as we mentioned earlier, Parks and Recreation does have two main funds. Parks operating fund, that one is a property tax backed fund, but it is also where all the income from Freedom Springs, Community Center, Field House and Coming Soon, the Marshall Sports Park, all of that flows through that one. And then the food beverage tax fund. That one is statutorily limited, but it is funded solely by those food beverage tax dollars. So as you scroll down through here, you will see again at the very bottom of this one that they do have a breakout based on which funds the line item is out of. What you'll find if you dig into this one, the Parks operating fund is almost exclusively salaries except for two capital items related to Marshall Sports Park. Part of the reason we did it that way was that the food beverage tax fund receipts were not sufficient. And rather than spend down some of the cash there, I felt it better to use some of the capacity we added to this fund. I want to go back up here and some of the things that you'll see increasing this one, obviously the cost of living. The health insurance, all the benefits that go along. We are looking at some full-time positions added. You've got playground equipment purchases, a lot of that is related to the sports park. Security cameras at the sports park, that's a big one. In the food beverage side, supplies increases. The biggest piece is we added those one-time buys for Marshall Road, Sports Park, to get that up and running. But there are some inflationary costs, particularly things like the chemicals that go to take care of the pool. Those have gone up over the last whole years. Services and charges. One of the one-time items we added is a Freedom Park master plan. We would be looking to bring in an outside engineer to help us develop what the rest of those currently unused areas might look like, how we can activate some of those areas that are currently just basically empty fields that are difficult to access and see if we can add some functionality to some of those spaces. Give people more options to utilize that part. I mentioned the increase in utilities. Part of it's just the fact that the utilities are increasing their cost of replacement. The other part is bringing on the sports park is significant because both the water and electric usage up there will be pretty big. We've got some pump motor replacements at Freedom Springs. Those are original to the facility. Basically, what we're trying to do is make sure that they are replaced prior to the breaking down. So if we don't have downtime during the season, we would keep the old motors as backups. But basically, we want to get in and get those replaced prior to the season starting. We've got some upgrades to the community center in there. We've got some vehicle leases for the trucks that like the parks maintenance people utilize. Credit card processing fees, those have been growing as we see more usage. Particularly Freedom Springs gets a lot of usage. Field House is a community center of getting a lot more usage of credit cards. And with the sports park coming online, we expect to see a lot of usage there. Basically, we absorb that rather than doing a convenience charge. It's easier to do it that way, I think, and people tend not to balk. From experience with the convenience charge, we used to charge that for stormwater. When we took away the convenience charge, we increased the number of people paid by credit card significantly, which was good because when people pay by credit card, you know you're getting the money and you know you'll have it in your bank account right away. It also decreased the number of people that just didn't pay. They had the convenience, they were able to do it over the phone, online, it made it work out very well. So we consider kind of a cost of doing business as far as credit card processing goes. The benefits to us outweigh the costs. Another one-time cost you'll see in there is for an eclipse festival. So I don't know if everybody's aware, but next year, we're going to be in the center of a full eclipse. From talking to our parks director, the hotels in the area are all already booked up for that in early April. There are several communities that are doing different events. Our will actually be the day before the eclipse, consisting of some concerts, Hot Air Ballin' Glow, vendors at Craig Park. The idea being all these people are gonna be in town with not much to do, so we'll get them somewhere to go and contribute to the economy really. And then the health insurance. So the Parks Department and the Street Department both reimburse the general fund, their health insurance costs for their employees. Obviously, health insurance is going up. Read the news, but that's one of the things that in Indiana seems to be a big concern and we're definitely seeing that. Our health insurance broker has given us an estimated increase in our premium and in our self-funded insurance costs of approximately twelve point four percent. So that's built into this budget across the board. I think I mentioned that, the board works earlier.
Hey Greg, sorry to interrupt you. What's driving that increase on our benefit? Is it just the number of claims or?
A lot of it is claims, so because we are self-funded, a lot of it is claims. But then there's also just, we have what's called stop-loss insurance. So basically, we pay everything out of our pocket up to one hundred and twenty five thousand. The stop-loss kicks in and picks up the difference, but that's a separate insurance that's part of the health insurance. And so that has increased over here as well, just based on our claim history.
What's been a trend year over year? Because I feel that twelve point five is pretty significant.
Actually, compared to last year's twenty six percent, it's not near as bad. Compared to the state as a whole, from our broker, the state as a whole was fifteen. So I mean, compared to the government industry, ours is a little bit higher, but that's because we pay a bigger percentage of our employees' part of it. We only share ten percent of the premium costs and pick up all of the actual cost for the health expenditures. So that is one thing that, because we do have a fairly good insurance compared to a lot of places. Our piece of it tends to be a bit higher. So on my list is fleet maintenance. So fleet maintenance, you'll have the five percent cost of living increase. In the past, that department also had a tool allowance. Rather than do a separate tax benefit, which is taxed at a higher rate. We worked with the superintendent and decided to roll that into their salary moving forward, so that's also in there. We did increase the repair parts for police cars. A big part of that is because we got more police cars, but also the cost of those parts has gone up. Cost of cars itself has gone up too. But yeah, since those are going up just due to inflation, we had to increase that line. We're also adding a line for rewrapping some of the police cars that are on the old end of what we have in stock. Part of that is they don't have a lot of miles on them, they're in good shape, but the decals are starting to fade or starting to peel. So by rewrapping them, we'll get longer usage out of them. We didn't see a reason to get rid of good cars and we could just invest in rewrapping them. So that line, right now it's a one-time, but if we have more next year that we can get extra gears out of by rewrapping, we may keep it. Next is the street department. So roads and streets have technically three funds. There are two MBH funds, this is something that happened a couple of years ago when the state restricted the use of the gas tax, where fifty percent of the gas tax had to go to construction or reconstruction of roads. So we had to put two separate MBH funds and then you've also got the local road and street fund. The big difference between these two, even though they both are funded with gas taxes, local road and streets statutorily is not allowed to fund salaries. So you'll see here that all the salaries fall under MBH, most of the supplies and services will fall under LRS. The MBH fund also has the wheel tax as a funding source, so that does help us to pay for those salaries. And then their health insurance, part of the benefits, that's in there. In LRS, we did adjust the fuel estimates based on actual usage. And then also there's a capital increase. In the past, we put in fifteen thousand to buy a mower. This year, due to inflation, those mowers are reaching seventeen five, so we did have to bump that.
I got a question. The county dropping our bridge fund, did that affect us all in the future?
As of yet, no. Part of that was that the county wanted us to take on the bridges. We were not willing to take on the maintenance of those bridges. We don't have the capacity, we don't have the staff, we don't have the expertise to take on bridge maintenance. It's federally mandated, there are a lot of regulations around it and we don't have a funding source for it. So we were not willing to take those on, so they still belong to the county. How they fund it is up to their council. Next one on my list is the community development services. CBS consists of the engineering, planning. All of your building permits go through there. They have built in here the five percent cost of living adjustments. We also are putting in funding for a part-time slash intern position. I think they had an intern this past summer and it worked out really well, and so we wanted to fund that moving forward. The hope being that we can get some people interested in getting into government engineering site particularly. We've had a lot of trouble trying to hire for some of those engineering type positions. So if we could find somebody good and train them in the way we like or we want to work, it might be a good resource for us. So if we can get them in the door, get them interested, get them liking it here, if we can get somebody. We're gonna take out a one-time purchase that was in last year's budget, so supply is actually being out a little bit. And then the services and charges line. We have to do an asset management plan every two years. That is a requirement of getting the community crossings grants, that you must create an asset management plan submitted to the state. So this coming up, two thousand and twenty four, is our redo year. We didn't have to do it last year, we do need to do it this year. So you see that fifty thousand to get that plan created in there. We also added some printing costs for permits and signs. We're seeing an increase in those, so we need to bump up that number to keep up with demand. Next one on my list is the clerk's office, the court director perpetuation fund. So the court's office, this is out of the general fund. Basically, the only change made in this budget was the cost of living adjustments for the clerk and then also for the administrative assistants in that department. Yes, administrative assistant for that department. That was the only change requested, so all the office supplies and services lines are going to stay. The clerk also has another funding source, that is the records perpetuation fund. These funds are generated off of document fees charged for court proceedings particularly, but also tickets or administrative fines that are paid through the court's office, how the document is associated. So one of the things I've seen with this one, similar to what was happening with probation, is that as the number of cases that were sent to our court have gone down, some of the revenues have gone down. We've been very fortunate though that interest rates on our bank accounts have gone up and we had some good investments on this one. So we were able to, with that, cover the five percent cost of living that went along with the benefits in this one. Benefits and the portion of administrative assistance and the part-time person that are paid out of this one. So those are captured within here as well. City court and then probation. Start with probation because we did discuss that a little bit ago. For the positions we're maintaining, there is an increase for the cost of living as well as the benefits that go with that. There's an adjustment to longevity based on the remaining people in that department that you can see. This one actually does recognize a decrease in the overall budget. And that basically consisted mostly of taking out those positions that were currently unfilled. And then also some of the supplies for some of the drug testing based on the number of cases they were doing. They didn't need as much, so we were able to back that down some and still keep keep within the limitations of the revenues and so all of the work being done over there. City court, this one did include the cost of living adjustment. During the COVID years, they had a personal protective equipment line, basically for masks, gloves, cleaning supplies. As that has fallen off, they've got a good stock over there and did not need to repeat that line. So you can see a decrease of the supplies line. We did add any line to allow for an audit of the court records. Basically, since we are having a change, we felt it was necessary to have that. Basically, so that the new judge coming in doesn't have anything surprising. I wouldn't expect anything, but it's a best practice when you have a change after that many years to just have somebody take a look and ensure that everything is where you want it to be. One of the other costs is related to bonds, so a handful of the employees of the court, including the judge, have bonded. That cost creeps up here and there, so we have a little bit of an increase to cover that as well. Final segment for this evening relates to capital projects and debt. So I'll just show you very quickly on the debt service page. Basically, any of the bonds that we have that are reviewed by the Department of Local Government Finance will appear on this page. And if you're interested in the individual line items of those bonds, you can drop down to the bottom. We've got each of those individual ones, including the proposed two thousand and twenty three. You'll notice there's not one for two thousand and twenty two on there because that was a one-year bond. It pays off at the end of this year, it will be gone. This year, we also paid off the two thousand and twelve Geo bond, so that one is gone as well. In two thousand and twenty four, we'll make the last payment on the Geo lit bonds as well as the last payment on the fire truck debt service. So you're gonna see those come off in next year's presentation. Let's jump to our capital funds. So with these cumulative capital funds, CCI, CCD and CCI cigarette tax funds. Basically, those are what the state considers to be any legal purpose funds. The statute actually agrees they can be used for any legal purpose of the city. The way that we have normally used them is for software licensing, for our property liability insurance and then also for the capital leases that we've done to replace the fleet of police vehicles, to replace dump trucks of the street department, to replace the CBS, the inspector vehicles. So as we do those leases. So as we do those leases, we run those through one of these funds. So you can see here for the CCD fund, proposed fleet leases, software licensing, the body camera and TASER contract that the police department runs through this fund. As we've added police officers, we have to have more body cameras, more tasers. That's the increase there. Desktop computers for all of the employees that have desks here. The air cards for the PD and fire for the laptops that are in the vehicles, basically to make sure that they have access to data. This is also where we were adding in that interview with software and the hardware that goes with it, the reality training, virtual reality training, fire suppression system that we discussed earlier. All of that's running through this one. The biggest piece of the cigarette tax fund is actually what we call flex budget. This is for those surprising items or for those opportunities that come up. This year, we had an opportunity come up. We were contacted by one of the dealers we use for pickup trucks. They had something that we could get ahold of and we hadn't been able to get ahold of trucks for a while at the amount we needed. We had cash on hand in this fund to be able to buy that and make the decision to move with it pretty quickly. So that gives us a little bit of flexibility. One of the new line items in this one is for a fleet maintenance software. The vendor is FliDio. Basically, this software allows the fleet maintenance superintendent to track all of the data regarding the vehicles as far as their maintenance program, mileage, fuel usage, trying to get, again, some of this preventative maintenance, get ahead of things so that we can make our vehicles last longer. Keeping in mind that it's very likely that we're going to need to make these vehicles last longer, not be able to buy as many in future years as things happen with the economy and becomes more expensive to get vehicles. It may be that we have less money to work with in future years. We want to be prepared, get out ahead of things, keep the vehicles running longer and make sure that they're all working well. The CCI rate funds. Basically, the two items driving this, software maintenance, pretty much across the board. Every software provider we have is increasing this coming year. I think that's just a matter of the current economy. They're getting inflationary costs for their business, they're pushing them on to their consumers. And then also our anticipated premium increases for property liability insurance. So that's all the buildings, all the vehicles, pretty much every piece of property owned by the city has to be insured. So we do have that ready to that fund. The other two that I've included here are the capital projects, the American Rescue Plan Act. What we've done previously is just cut throughout the year as things come up that we find we'll utilize this. Since we knew about this in advance, I felt it would be easier to just put it into our budget and get your approval now for the project forward in 2024's budget. But basically, this is all related to camera systems, security camera systems. So there's the server upgrades, the city center, the justice center, the fire headquarters and the airport. Those are each of the different line items there. The airport, you'll notice that number is larger because we have to run cable, fiber optic cable further out. Most of the fiber is already in place for this area around here. All the city center buildings from here, community center, the justice center, the fire headquarters, we're all interconnected on the same fiber backbone right now. So we don't have to run new fiber for these cameras. But for the airport install, it's going to require a new fighter. Proposed Geo bonds, as I mentioned, this is where we got that fire engine. And then also we've got road projects built in here, particularly looking at our annual baby crack ceiling as well as there are the main street corridor, Smith Valley Road, Hudson Road, Market Plaza. There are several things in the works that some of these funds could go towards. The biggest thing though would probably be the annual baby. We had a study last year, basically that we needed to be investing around $4 million in roads per year. Our gas tax coverage will be free. So between community crossings grants, Geo bonds, the supplemental local income tax, some of the other $10 that we've been able to invest in roads. We're trying to make sure that we're at least getting that number here in the year on road investment. So that we don't lose traffic in the shape of roads. So we look at that every year. We meet with the engineering department, the street department, go through what's known as a Pizer rating. Basically, we have a company, a couple of years come out, rate all of the streets in the city and the ones that are on the lower end of that rating scale, the ones that are more desperately needed repairs. And so we try to focus our efforts there first. So I've come to the end of the departmental lines. Does anybody have any questions, anything on any part of the budget that I can answer?
Greg, I have a question. I think last year we bonded to do the sidewalk plan. And do you have any idea what percentage of that we've gotten done and how far those funds went?
I'm not sure how much has actually gotten done yet because we budgeted 500K and basically, right now they're assessing what areas we can fit into and how much we can actually get done for that. So our goal with that is to get the maximum amount done under that dollar amount, see what's left and then out of a future budget, put in some more and get the rest of it done. We wanted to try and find the large chunks because we do know that unless there's a road project coming through that area, generally the sidewalks are not getting as much attention as we would like. So if we could do them in large areas of the city at one time, we think that's the best way to do it. So right now, they're assessing what's our best bet, what's the biggest bang for our buck. And then we'll get out there, whether it's replacing panels or raising panels to level them, we're trying to get as much done as possible under that $500,000 and then do it again.
But we have done some this year, haven't we?
Yes, we've still done some of the going out and raising some of the panels. But as far as the large-scale program, we haven't actually contracted that piece of it out. We've just done the normal contract, spot checking areas that need it right away. But what we're trying to do now is get a vendor to come in and give us an assessment of how much can you get done for this, like pick the biggest area of the park of the city you can get done. Tell us what it is, let us get that contracted and do it in one big project. Kind of like we do with larger scale paving projects and just come through and do a large area all at once. Rather than right now, we go out and hit the areas that need it right away where there's some sort of an issue. But if we get ahead of it, I have the same mentality as our vehicle maintenance. Get ahead of it, get out in front of it and then keep it up, you know, moving forward. I think we'll be in better shape in the future.
Okay, more had some resonance that have come in through the side.
So yeah, and we will probably start getting a lot more of those as we start getting the big chunks done.
But any other questions for Mr. Ray?
I was just going to ask one. Informational, is the street part, is that somewhere on the website of what streets were targeted to be done this year?
For this year, I think the annual baby is actually done. The state is at right there. So then we meet usually every January to go through the list of the engineers on what are the road ratings and decide basically how much can we fit in with the dollars we have available of those roads and try to target bias priorities first. And so that process in the past has happened beginning of January. So we'll have that put together then.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Anything from the mayor's office?